...to join us tonight. We will begin with the invocation by a dear friend Reverend E. Ray Cox, and we will stand for the invocation, and I'd ask that we remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Reverend Cox, thank you for coming down.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of City Council. It's always a delight for us to be here, to share with you in your awesome responsibility to those of us who expect you to do such magnificent jobs at what you do. It is a privilege always to be here, and particularly from a pastoral perspective, having the responsibilities that we do, to have our voices heard throughout our community in the best and richest interests of the citizenry of our city. Thank you for sharing in prayer. God, I help in ages past, I hope for years to come, I'll shelter from the stormy bliss, and I'll eternal home. We are highly favored to stand before you, our God, and this Assembly on this evening of August duty and responsibility. We're here to share in the inauguration of the newly-elected persons of the electorate of our city, to share the rule and government that we expect to follow with diligence and with deep appreciation. And as these persons of choice set upon the voyage of government, that they might find help, courage, and enduring inspiration by their faith-based positions of divine conviction. And God, that they would embrace your word of Scripture, such as may be found in these words, "In all of thy ways acknowledge him, and he shall direct your path." And God, without doubt, these persons will surely encounter issues of great challenge over and over again, and we pray that they will pause, though they be in the mud or the quagmire of uncertainty, difficult decision-making, that they will not be able to find instantaneous answers to their concerns. But God, we ask that they will never forget the guiding hand of God, and we pray that you would give them sight to look on things, insight to see into things, and foresight to look beyond things. In other words, we pray that you would make them visionaries of a time that is so necessary when this our nation is standing in such an awe of God and struggling to find a better path to a better life and a better future all across this nation. And God, we ask that their work will be of such, that when they've come to the end of their tenure, that they will be able to utter the words of the Apostle Paul, who said, "I fought a good fight. I've kept the faith. I have run the race. But now I'm ready, and I leave my post of duty with pride and with a sense of purpose having been served with the very best of my ability." Now, God, these and all other meaningful blessings that will come to bear upon the quality of their work, we ask in the name of him who is from everlasting unto everlasting, thou art God. It is in his precious name that we ask it all, and the people of God from all parts of our community who wish this people well, say amen and amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Reverend Cox, thank you again for joining us. I can assure you, your words were taken and listened to well, and we thank you for them. I would like to, before we do the ceremony, I'd like to let it be known that Mrs. Henley is not with us tonight. The reason is her mother passed away yesterday, and I know that I speak for the entire council and all the citizens of Virginia Beach in expressing our deepest sympathy to her and her family. I'd also like to recognize the Boy Scout Troops 79 and 417 who are attending tonight. Bruce Berlin, Committee Chairman and Communications Merit Badge Counselor, Clark Berlin, Trevor Greeney, Nick Hazelbaker, Michael Johnson, Max Kennedy, Alex Kizler, James Kizler, Errol Lambro, Paul Movizio, David Payne, Trevor Roberts, Connor Tim, Casey Thott, Cooper Van Scoya, and we welcome them, please. I would now like to ask the Honorable Glenn Crowshaw, Judge in the Virginia Beach Circuit Court, to come forward to give us the oath of office, and the first oath of office will be given to me as mayor.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, I am prepared to administer and file the requisite oaths of office. If you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, William D. Sessmans Jr., solemnly swear or affirm
solemnly swear and affirm
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia
and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia
and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge all the duties incumbent upon me
that I will faithfully and impartially discharge all the duties upon me
as mayor of the City of Virginia Beach
as mayor of the City of Virginia Beach
for a four-year term
for a four-year term
beginning January 1, 2013
beginning January 1, 2013
and ending December 31, 2016
and ending December 31, 2016
according to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
according to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Judge. We'll now move to the ceremonial oath of office for Virginia Beach City Council. We will have Glenn R. Davis, Amelia N. Ross Hammond, Robert M. Dyer, and Rosemary Wilson, and I will turn it back over to Judge Crowshaw.
I will say, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I learned a long time ago that it was very difficult to follow my good friend, Reverend Cox, but I'm going to do the best I can.
They don't come any finer, do they?
Councilman Davis, would you come to the podium, please? Would you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Glenn R. Davis Jr.
I, Glenn R. Davis Jr.
do solemnly swear or affirm
do solemnly swear and affirm
that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America
that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America
and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia
and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia
and that I will fairly and impartially discharge the duties
and that I will fairly and impartially discharge the duties
incumbent upon me as a member of the Virginia Beach City Council
incumbent upon me as a member of the Virginia Beach City Council
for a four-year term
for a four-year term
beginning January 1, 2013
beginning January 1, 2013
and ending December 31, 2016
and ending December 31, 2016
according to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
according to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Ross Hammond, if you would come forward. If you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Amanda Ross Hammond
I, Amelia Ross Hammond
I'm sorry. Reverend Cox, I did it once again. Let me try that again. I, Amelia Ross Hammond
I, Amelia Ross Hammond
do solemnly swear or affirm
do solemnly swear or affirm
that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America
and I will support the Constitution of the United States of America
and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia
and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia
and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge all duties
and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge all duties
incumbent upon me
incumbent upon me
as a member of the Virginia Beach City Council
as a member of the Virginia Beach City Council
for a four-year term
for a four-year term
beginning January 1, 2013
beginning January 1, 2013
and ending December 31, 2016
and ending December 31, 2016
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations. Councilman Dyer, would you come forward, please? If you'd raise your right hand, please. I, Robert M. Dyer Jr.
I, Robert M. Dyer
solemnly swear
solemnly swear
or affirm
or affirm
that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America
that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America
and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia
and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia
and that I will faithfully and impartially perform
and I will faithfully and impartially perform
the duties incumbent upon me
the duties incumbent upon me
as a member of the Virginia Beach City Council
as a member of the Virginia Beach City Council
for a four-year term
for a four-year term
beginning July 1, 2013
January 1
January 1, 2013
You got you again, Reverend. Beginning January 1, 2013.
Doing this without my reading glasses.
I'm about to join you.
And ending December 31, 2016
ending December 31, 2016
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations. Councilwoman Wilson, if you would come forward, please. If you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Rosemary Wilson
I, Rosemary Wilson
do solemnly swear or affirm
do solemnly swear or affirm
that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America
that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America
the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia
the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia
and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge
and I will faithfully and impartially discharge
all of the duties incumbent upon me
all of the duties incumbent upon me
as a member of the Virginia Beach City Council
as a member of the Virginia Beach City Council
for a four-year term
for a four-year term
beginning January 1, 2013
beginning January 1, 2013
and ending December 31, 2016
and ending December 31, 2016
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations.
I will now look for a motion for the election of the Vice Mayor. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make that motion. It is my privilege to nominate Louis Jones to once again become our Vice Mayor. Knowing Louis, the way we have his steady hand on the tiller of the ship of state in this fine city, and of all of his accomplishments, whether it be Lake Gaston or getting us through the BRAC situation we had, we look forward to the leadership that he has given us, but also to, we look forward, as we go through challenging times, that Louis is the right man for the right season. It is my privilege to put his name in nomination.
Do I hear any other nominations? I'll call for the question, please. This is going to be a close one.
I vote 10 to 0. You have elected Louis R. Jones as the Vice Mayor of this city for the next two years.
Congratulations, Mr. Jones. Would you have those off the
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for many years when I practiced before this body, I would not have presumed to know the result of a vote, but I do have an oath that has Mr. Jones's name.
We have a pass.
Would you raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me? I, Louis R. Jones
I, Louis R. Jones
do solemnly swear or affirm
do solemnly swear or affirm
that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America
that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America
and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia
and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia
and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge all of the duties incumbent upon me
and I will faithfully and impartially discharge all of the duties incumbent upon me
as the Vice Mayor of the Virginia Beach City Council
as the Vice Mayor of the Virginia Beach City Council
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Judge Crowshaw, we thank you very much for taking the time to come over this evening. Your dear friend to all of us up here, and we appreciate it.
It's a privilege and an honor, and from the seven presiding judges of our circuit, we want you to know that we respect your commitment to public service. We understand the sacrifice that involves. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge, for coming over. Our formal seating for the next two years will be as seen here, and I hope everyone's happy with that. I will now start with Amelia. Would you like to have any comments, please?
You can go ahead from right here.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, elected officials, family, friends, associates, and constituencies. First, let me say how humbled I am to have been elected by you to serve the Second District of historic Kempsville in the great city of Virginia Beach. It is with a deep sense of pride that I share this moment with you. And most of all, I am blessed to have my mother, who is just coming through the door right there, as you can turn around if you ask her to wave. This is Nancy A. Ross, my brothers Charles and Richard, my son Anwar, and my 94-year-old great cousin, and if she will wave right here up front, will be here. Most of all, I can't help but think, 50 years ago, when my father, the late Honorable Nathan C. Ross, was former mayor of the city of Monrovia, Liberia, and I know he's witnessing this in spirit. I am fully cognizant that with great honor comes great responsibility, and I will strive to do what is right for the common good, seek authentic input through community dialogues and town hall meetings, encourage coalition building, and keep my constituencies informed. My appreciation again for the privilege and honor you have bestowed on me to achieve my greatest passion, which is to serve a purpose greater than myself. May God continue to prosper the residents of the City of Virginia Beach as we also celebrate 50 wonderful years. It's our anniversary. Thank you.
Mrs. Wilson, would you like to make any comments?
Just briefly, Your Honor. To be reelected, and now this will be my fourth election serving the cities in the seat, and it's such an honor and a privilege to know that the citizens, they affirm that they like what I've been doing, and they recognize how much I love this city and try to do the right things for all the citizens. And I am just privileged and honored to be able to sit in the seat again. I want to thank the many, many friends that helped me in this last campaign. It was not an easy campaign. It was hard, and I couldn't have done it without the people who were there helping me. I would like to thank my husband and my daughters and their husbands. They could not be here tonight. They would love to be here, but they have some important work that they're doing in New York. But I have some friends here who said that they're my family tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Davis.
Yes, sir. Well, I'd like to thank a number of people. First, my family. My parents were not able to be here this evening, but my wife Shelley is somewhere over there, and I know during the campaign, many of you probably met my wife, and you were probably trying to figure out who was actually running as many times as you saw her on the campaign trail. I can guarantee you, she didn't know what she was getting into when she married me seven years ago, but I think she's figured it out by now. So, honey, thank you for everything. And, you know, it's always tough when you have the campaigns. You need a lot of volunteers out there and people to help you, and there's two of them here today. Ross and Jay are here, which I don't think Rosemary and I could ask for better campaign coordinators with regards to their precincts. And Ross and Jay, thank you, thank you very much. We couldn't have done it without you. And then the citizens, I'm very humbled and honored to be able to sit up here again and help represent the city that I grew up in and gave me so much, having grew up here, gone to school here, and then be able to come back and start a family and start my career. So, I'm just honored that the citizens saw what we were able to do as a team over the last four years that I've been here and decided to reelect me to be part of this team going forward. Thank you all very much.
Mr. Dyer.
You know, it's indeed a privilege to be here. I think that's a word that's common. Humble is a word that's common among us. You know, we have a great task and responsibility ahead of us as an elected body to work with the public, to achieve the goals that we set out to do, to make this and continue to be the greatest city in the world, Mr. Mayor. And the point is, I want to personally thank my dear wife Trish, who's in the audience. I am privileged also to be a father, a grandfather, but I'm also privileged to be a member of a very proud and vibrant community, and it is an honor to be able to move forward over the next four years and continue to help and do the right thing for the right reason. God bless you, and thank you all.
Well, I'll be real candid. I didn't tell my family about this tonight, and yet they showed up for that. I am very grateful. I have my young mother with me tonight, and my wife, she gave us a little hiccup during the campaign, but she's doing great now. And I've got my all three daughters with me, Molly, Kate, and Anne Douglas, you know, my sister Barbara, and most importantly, all due respect, we got Maddie, our granddaughter here, and she's 22 months, and I'm happy to say Molly is going to have another baby before Monday, so that could be right now, you know. I hope it won't be right now, but
We've done it before.
I say, you have. That has happened here before, but I sincerely thank my family for their wonderful support during this past campaign. But the bottom line is this, thank you to each and every one of you for allowing me the honor to serve as mayor of what I consider the greatest city in the world. This is a great city, and it's a great city because of the people who live here and the people who serve here. And for that, I'm just absolutely honored to have this position. I've got the greatest respect for everyone that's sitting up here on this council and for every city employee that works for this city. And, you know, we don't always agree, but you know, we're not supposed to always agree. You know, that's the way the system works, but we do find ways to work together when we don't agree, and that's what I thoroughly have enjoyed working and accomplishing the last four years. It was a great four years, but I really think the next four years even going to be better, and I look forward to it. But most importantly, again, I thank everyone for allowing me the honor to be the mayor of the greatest city in the world. Thank you very much.
All right, folks, it's time to go to work. Okay, do we have a motion for the certification of the closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? We'll call for the question, please.
By vote of 10 to 0, you have certified the closed session to be in accordance with the motion to recess.
Do I have a motion for approval of the minutes of the informal and formal sessions for December 11, 2012?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I'll call for the question, please.
By vote of 10 to 0, you have approved the minutes as submitted.
We will now get a ordinances and resolutions on the consent agenda and the planning. Please note, council, we will be pulling one of the planning issues. There is someone to speak. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval under the consent agenda, first under ordinances and resolutions, item O. 1, which is the ordinance to authorize temporary encroachments into a portion of city-owned drainage easement for James Jr. and Kelly Howren at 4401 Genie Street, Lynn Haven District. O. 2, ordinances to accept and appropriate to the fire department's fiscal year 2012-13 operating budget, A, $31,700 from the United States Department of Homeland Security to continue the Citizen Corps Council and the Community Emergency Response Team programs, and B, $25,000 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management for a tidewater regional heavy tactical rescue team for equipment, training, and exercises. O. 3, ordinance transfer, $200,000 from the General Fund Reserve for a marketing promotion and coordination of the city's 50th anniversary events, A, $100,000 to Virginia Beach Events Unlimited, B, $50,000 to the Central Business District Association, and C, $50,000 to the Office of the City Clerk for a Sister Cities events.
Oh, and a public hearing for planning?
For consent under planning. Item P. 1, which is the application of Amada Hoffler Tower 4 LLC and TCA Block 4 Retail LLC for a conditional use permit for a private university college expansion at 222 Central Park Avenue in the Lynn Haven District. P. 2, the application Tammy &amp; Charles Bodie for a conditional use permit for a residential kennel at 770 Glen Shire in the Kempsville District. P. 3, the application of Dave &amp; Buster's Inc. and Lynn Haven Mall LLC for a conditional use permit for an indoor recreational entertainment at 701 Lynn Haven Parkway in the Rose Hall District. P. 4, the application of Town Center Associates 2 LLC for a conditional use permit for a multifamily dwellings at Block 11, Phase 5, bounded by Main Street, Constitution Drive, Columbus Street, and Town Center Drive in the Lynn Haven District. So moved, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Discussion. I'll call for the question, please.
I vote of 10 to 0, you have approved the planning items and the consent agenda as read by the Vice Mayor.
Thank you. We'll now hear the application of Kevin Patrick Romaine/Freeman Trust for a change of zoning from B. 2 Community Business to add to Agriculture District regarding residential dwelling at 5677 Morris Neck Road. We had this on the consent agenda. I'm going to ask the opposition to come speak first, please.
You'll have to have it.
We welcome you.
The time, Your Honor?
Excuse me?
How much time?
Three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Neil Schavs. I have no objection to the zoning change. My concern is with the residential conversion of the fire station. Mr. Romaine has a very favorable option to purchase the building on its commercial plot for $75,000. He could rent the building with a positive cash flow. I don't know why he would want to convert it, the building, to live there. Mr. Romaine himself said at the planning board that it could cost more to bring the building up to code than to salvage it and the antenna and build a new home. I also find it troubling that the city has allowed the Remains to live in the fire station since June of 2011 in violation of the zoning ordinances. I brought this to the attention of Ms. Henley in July of 2011, and she assured me that Mr. Hirschberger would look into the matter. Mr. Hirschberger verified that the Remains were living in the fire station, and when they did not vacate as he asked, a summons was issued for the owner, Mr. Freeman. Mr. Freeman avoided a court appearance by assuring the city that no one would live in the building, yet the Remains continue to reside there to this day. Ms. Lasley assured me after the planning board meeting that if the fire station is still being used as a residence with no valid occupancy permit after this meeting, that then she would take action. We find that no building permits have been issued as yet for any conversion work of the property to a residence, and I find it kind of the property to a residence, and I find it kind of confusing here on the, on the item on your agenda. It says conversion to ag to agricultural district, re-residential dwelling at 5677 Morris Neck Road. There is no residential dwelling at 5677 Morris Neck Road. There's a situation there. And as far as the residential code goes, code violations are visible from the street at this time. There's also the matter of if it's going to be subdivided, what the lot size is going to be. If it's not going to be subdivided and the Romaines are going to rent, rent this property from the Freemans, then, of course, the property would have to meet the rental codes. The city has two other fire stations recently closed and abandoned, and they're in more developed areas. I'm sure the residents of those neighborhoods would, would not stand by while people resided in there in substandard properties and a substandard residence and without any occupancy permit. So we hope that the city council will seriously consider this matter before allowing any more, anyone to go forward and continue to reside in the building.
Thank you very much for your comments. Appreciate it. Thank you. Are there any other speakers?
No, Your Honor.
Karen, can you fill us in?
Well, as you know, the sites don't be too commercial at this point, so the owners cannot apply to convert it to a residence unless this rezoning is approved. If the rezoning is approved, then that would be the next step. They would have to apply for a permit and get a certificate of occupancy for it to be a residence. I've talked with our building official, and she felt that that conversion would be manageable. There are certain requirements, such as every bedroom has to have a window, that type of thing, but she felt since it had been lived in by the firefighters that she thought that conversion should not be too horrendous.
Mr. Ball.
But could you address just his narrative? Because he made a, his narrative suggested that we consciously knew that something wasn't in compliance, and we allowed that condition to exist. So I appreciate the distinction of what they can do going forward, but can you either validate or point out the errors in his narrative as to how we got to where we are?
Right. It was my understanding, I understood it a little bit differently than he did, that we were not able to prove that the people were living in the, in the, in the fire station, that they did have a valid residential address elsewhere. We knew they were there, you know, from time to time, but we were never able to prove that they lived there. Recently, the gentleman had called me to say that they, he thought they were still living there, and it was very close to, it had already been heard by the planning commission, it was going on to you. So if you would deny this request tonight, then I would take more steps and make sure that no one is living in the, in the building.
I just wanted to make sure the viewing public have, here the other side. Thank you so much, Karen.
All right. Counsel, is anyone comfortable making a motion after what we've heard? Otherwise, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve it as written.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? I'll call for the question, please.
By vote of ten to zero, you have approved the application for the change of zoning.
Thank you very much. Now move to appointments. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate to the Advertising Advisory Committee, Mr. Joseph DeBarrio. To the Community Services Board, Lucinda Ross. To the Human Rights Commission, Elaine Iglesias. To the Resort Advisory Commission, Joseph DeBarrio is ex officio, and Tom Brown. To the Virginia Beach Community Development Corporation, Ms. Elsie Barnes. I believe that's Dr. Elsie Barnes, isn't it, Mrs. Ross? And to the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, Dr. Amelia Ross Hammond.
Do I hear any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, please.
By vote of ten to zero, you have appointed those named by the vice mayor to the various committees.
Is there any unfinished business? Is there any new business? I'm getting ready to adjourn, but ladies and gentlemen, please understand that immediately after this, we will be having open mic. This is when the council chambers are not televised, and it allows, you have to sign up ahead, and we do have three speakers that will be limited to three minutes each. But I will adjourn the formal meeting now, and will you let us know when we can? The televisions are off, please.